I'm going to call to honor the zoning commission.
Just so you can see in.
Agenda for Monday, September 16th. Town hall first floor conference room, Old Saybrook. Starting with our 5:30 special meeting with a presentation called Traffic 101, The Basics of Traffic and New Trends. Presenter Greg Del Rio, PE, Hattie and Hanover Traffic Engineering, and open to all board and commission members as well. Mr. Del Rio, please.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you. My name's Greg Del Rio. I've been working with Old Saybrook for about three or four years now. Since I took over for Michael Valente, who maybe some of you may remember. I've been around for a while. So I direct the traffic for Connecticut at Artisan Hanover, Procurement and Leadership in State of Connecticut. And yeah, so Chris is asking, you know, can we come in and do a little while while on traffic and trends? I did something similar for the Casio, me and him, long ago. So enforcement, who's if you know what Casio is. And it's very similar. I changed this a little bit to gear it towards the type of stuff that we do. We deal here mostly as peer reviews. We also, you know, help out and give some advice on, you know, traffic calming and other, anything related to the state. Sometimes Chris will call me up and take a look at something like recently we did the drive-throughs with this sort of deep dive into what's going on with drive-throughs and how's Connecticut DOT look at it? How do other places look at it? So what I put together here is a upfront is focusing more on the traffic impact studies because that's mostly what we do with you. And it's mostly what the planning zone commission does in their reviews. So I tried to give a little bit of a background on what we do and why we do it and what are the things we look at, what are the things maybe you should also be looking at at a higher level without, you know, necessarily drilling down into the traffic studies every time. And then the back half of the presentation gets a little bit more into just traffic trends, traffic calming, you know, other issues that can be implemented around town and similar towns and cities. From just, you know, making things more pedestrian bike friendly, for example, to parking and other issues. So kind of touch on a lot of different things. Should be about a half hour or so, and then we can do Q and A and address anything. You can, you know, it's informal, so it's up to you if you want to ask questions as they go along or wait to the end.
I should have said at the beginning, Greg, let everybody introduce themselves.
Sure.
So you know who was here. So I'll start with Mark Calorilla, Chair of Zoning.
Director of Planning Commission for Regional Planning Commission.
Lord Gray, Zone of Commission.
Robert Kraken, Planning Commission.
Tom Friedman, Zoning Commission.
Jerry Lewis, Vice Chair of Zone of Commission.
Paula Kaye, Planning Commission.
Nice to meet you all.
And we've got anybody online?
Yeah.
We have a few online too, so.
Do I need to do it from line? Oh, I see. Yeah. Let me stop sharing.
Yeah.
I think that's the only.
There we go.
Did that do it?
Dennis has a question.
Okay. How many attendees do we have?
Dennis and Brenda, but Dennis has a question.
Dennis, you have a question?
You can promote.
Promote them, yeah. And Brenda too.
Yeah, you minus one.
Dennis, do you have a question?
Always.
There we go. Looks like I promoted. That's Tulamary with planning.
Okay, great. Brenda, are you there? You might be muted.
I am here. Thank you. Brenda Dyson.
All right. I don't know if we can get that. I can't. I'm a good spot. Okay. So, yeah, I always like to talk about my openings screens. And this has quite a few, getting back to the trends, right? This is, this is in New Haven. It's a speed table. So it's a whole intersection, not just a crosswalk is raised to give a little bit of prominence. And it's a lot of university students coming back and forth in the neighborhood, going to the downtown, the residential area. The signs, you can see the one on the left that has the light on. That's called a rapid rectangular rapid flashing beacon, R R F B for short. These are popping up more and more in unsignaled intersections and particularly mid-block crosswalks. And then you can also see the pavement markings. You can see the colored pavement, which is now in the MUTCD. We'll touch on that in a little bit. And then the pavement markings themselves, which, you know, strengthens the communication between the road user, the driver, and the pedestrians and all users that something is happening and something is coming up that this is also a bump ahead sign to make you aware of the raised island, I mean, the raised intersection. And these are not just small intersections. They're actually being implemented at larger ones as well these days. But just a quick, you know, just. Okay. So I don't need to ask if you can look at the screen. So like I said, we'll start off with traffic impact studies. I'll talk about the updates. We just had an update to the manual of uniform traffic control devices with some major changes, first time in a long time that there's been some major changes to it. And we'll get into that a little bit. And that includes next bullet, which are called quick builds, which is now the acceptance of these sort of temporary traffic control trends. So paint, ballards, things that you can do prior and test things out before maybe doing like a curb extension, for example. Adaptive traffic signals is, you know, another trends. And then updates on more flexibility for the municipalities, queuing, what are transit credits and pass by credits? So depending on where your location is and what the land use is, it's not all new traffic trips. We'll talk a little bit about parking and mobility. And then the Safety Action Plan, which is something that Old Saybrook recently applied for. It's a federal grant to do an area-wide, town-wide safety search traffic. So traffic studies. So there's, when we get the application and you review it, the first thing we do is take a look and see what category it is and what level of review it requires. And one of the first things we do is look at what the existing land use is versus what the proposed land is. So if it's a green site season, it's all new trips. If it's, if it's a currently developed site, but maybe it hasn't been occupied, that gets into a little bit of a gray area. Most towns are using two years, I think. You know, I don't know if Chris, if there's, if that's written. But usually the decision is if it's older than two years, it's been vacant. All the trips are new. If it's, if it's been occupied within the last two years, then they'll give it, you know, some credit. So, you know, if it's a liquor store and it's going down, and then they put 20 residential units in there, you take the credit for the liquor store versus, you know, so they're incremental trips. If it's been around since the last two years, but if it's older than two years, we tend to say no. The residential trips are all new trips and it's not an increment compared to the, so you're comparing to a community site, basically. And then we see how many trips that is. And then we make a determination whether it's going to be a full traffic impact study versus what some of us call a traffic evaluation. So a traffic impact study is the analysis. That includes a whole data collection, go out, count the cars on the streets. How far do you have to go? You know, you want to do a driveway. You wanted to usually the intersection, signalize intersections or stop controlled intersections to each side of the development. Or if it's on a corner, maybe you have to go down side streets. And then you see how many trips you have and how it's dissipating as you go through those intersections further and further to figure out, you know, what should be in the study. Usually around 50 trips an hour is sort of the threshold where you look to how far you have to go. So once the trips go below 50, that's a total going to an intersection, not just in one direction. You know, that sort of says, all right, we don't need to go any further because after that, it's, you know, it's like a Monday versus a Tuesday. It's a very small increment that's not expected to have an impact on traffic operations and conditions and safety. So traffic impact studies are usually associated with larger developments. And then, of course, as I said, change in land use that increases trips, right? So if you're going from typically, let's say you're reusing an existing building and it's currently residential and it's going to go to office. Office usually makes more trips. That's going to be an increment. If it's office and you're not making the envelope any bigger and you're changing it to residential, most likely we still will do the trip generation comparison. But more than likely, it's a reduction in trips. Now you're talking about a traffic evaluation, right? Why am I going to go collect data, do the analysis, make the applicant go through all of those expenses? When you're going to end up with less traffic on the network, of course, your results are going to show as existing or better, not worse. So, and that's what goes into the evaluation. Trip generation, the comparison. We say trips are reduced. We're done with traffic as far as, you know, as long as they're not moving the driveway. If they're moving the driveway, sometimes we do want to look at traffic depending on where that relocation is. Just at the driveway, you don't need to go any further than that. So that's sort of a real quick synopsis between a traffic study and a traffic evaluation. So the one on top, I just took a couple of snapshots of projects that either come through here in the past or other places, Whole Foods, as you know. So that would go with traffic study, right? It's an expansion of square footage. They're adding a couple of pads. They're not relocating the, at least the last site plan we saw, they're not relocating the access points. But those other elements are enough to trigger a full traffic study. The one on the bottom, I don't even notice, but there is a site plan for it. It's an existing bank. This is in Fairfield. It's right on the edge of a little bit of a commercial block, but mostly surrounded by residential. They're reusing the building as is. They're doing like a small 10 by 10 extension on one side of it, but nothing significant. And the childcare is generating less trips than the bank. So we didn't need to do a full traffic study. We just did the evaluation. And even with that, as you guys all know, you still will have the community come out in droves. I could not believe how many people came out to fight this. And if I was going from a childcare to a bank, it would be the same, right? Reaction. You can't win sometimes. But, you know, it was a lot to show people that, you know, the overall impact is less than the bank was. So you still have to go through all the steps and be very thorough because you know you're going to get pushed back, even some things that seem very straightforward and obvious. You have to be able to, you know, have the answers, basically, to all the questions and all the different opinions, you know, safety and, you know, proximity to the corners and stop signs and, you know, through traffic and speeding. So we did collect speed data for that one to show people that, you know, that it was a perception and not a reality. And then both, whether you're doing an impact study or evaluation, we always look at safety, so we do a crash assessment. We want to know if there's an existing condition that needs to be addressed with the new development. Here's your opportunity as a commission to say timeout, you know, I understand, you know, but we'd like to see some improvements and leverage the fact that the land use is changing and that maybe you can get the developer and the applicant to pitch in and help correct the existing situation because they are going to be generating, you know, trips and things are going to change. And then we do the site plan reviews. We look at the parking. Is there adequate parking? Is the layout, does it make sense? Is it safe by the walkways to and from the buildings and other, and outside from the sidewalks or pedestrian access? Is that safe? Does that make sense? Are you connecting to what we call desire lines, right? So many times you'll see a nice layout, beautiful sidewalks, and then you'll see a dirt path across the grass or across the landscape because they didn't like think about where people are coming from and going to in what we call the desire line. So you want to kind of map that out and say, you know what? Either put a fence there or put something or make it a path and make it a little more accessible because that's real. And it's better for them too because more people will walk there. You know, if you're running around with lunch, let's say, you know, out of your way. So circulation, access, the location of the driveways, and particularly site lines. Site lines is very important with existing and proposed developments. And we'll get about a little bit into site lines later. I don't have a graphic, but I can talk about it a little bit in the slides. So that's, those are the elements of the traffic study. So again, so usually we go out. Once we've made the determination on whether it's a traffic study or an evaluation, we always go out and look at the site to make sure what are the existing conditions? What are the challenges? Are there any safety concerns? And the picture on the right just is a synopsis, a summary graphic that shows, you know, the number and type of travel lanes. Are there sidewalks? Are there bike lanes? What are the parking regulations? All of that will record and take notes on. And usually, you know, have a couple of paragraphs in the study about the report, I'll call it, summarizing the existing conditions. Trip generation, we talked about. Get into that a little bit later. And then we do trip generation. So trip generation is estimating how many trips this land use is going to generate. Trip distribution is where are they going? So let's say I generate 50 trips. 25 of them are entering, 25 of them are exiting. It would be like, you know, like a small donut or a cafe. They enter and exit in the same hour. It's an even distribution. Where are they coming from? Where are they going? You know, are half of them making lefts? Are half of them making rights? 25, 75? Is there a side street? Are they going in three different directions if you're on a corner, et cetera? So we figure out the trip distribution. And then from there, we do our traffic analysis. So once we've done the distribution, we see how many vehicles are on your driveway. And then, like I said, at the adjacent intersections to figure out if we need to do further analysis and how many intersections need to be included. Safety in Connecticut, it's, we either go, well, we do two things. We touch base with the local police. We ask them for their reports. We ask them real quick for their, you know, concerns. Usually it's an email that we send out. And then if it warrants it, or requires it, or there's an issue, sometimes we follow up or conversation. They'll send us the police reports. We also look at the Yukon Crash Repository, if you've heard of that. So basically every town in the city of Connecticut sends Yukon and Connecticut DOT through Yukon, their crash forms, and then they enter all the data. It's a really nice database. It's totally publicly accessible. You can go on there and roam around yourselves and see what kind of data there is for Old Saybrook and the neighborhood. So we do that. We see if there's high frequency crash locations, it's called, or any other concerns and confront of or adjacent to the development that should be looked at or, you know, included in the assessment. Site access, you know, where is it located? How does it fit in with the surrounding streets? And we talked about site circulation and parking. So those are the, those are the elements.
Just a quick. What are you talking about? Just like the trip generation, is that only like car trips? Or is it all like bicycles, walking, all time?
Yep.
So you have a way to break that down based on that?
Correct. And that gets a little bit into this now.
Okay.
So, so this is guidance from Connecticut DOT. So every state municipality, some have their guidances. If not, we use sort of the national guides and the ITE. But for Connecticut, it's zero, 20, and then either up from 20% to 45%, depending on the land uses. So as you can see, here are some examples. So if the proposed land use is residential, office, warehouse, manufacturing, there's no pass by credit. So my pass by credit is, if you're not familiar with that term, is you're already on the road, you're going from work to home, and you stop off at CVS to go grab a toothbrush, right? You didn't make a purpose trip. You didn't leave your home, go to CVS and go back home, right? You were going somewhere else and diverted your trip slightly to stop at the supermarket, to go to the drugstore, to, you know, whatever the trip made. So that's what a pass by trip is. So we don't, you're not adding a car to the network. You're just adding a turning movement on and off Boston Road, for example, to get in and out of a McDonald's. So, so that's, that's the pass by credit. So you don't get any credits or reductions. Most of the land uses, they let you take a 20%. That would be the drugstore, the fast food, et cetera, gas station. Except for 45%, so I use bad examples. 45% is fast food, convenience stores with gas, car washes, and quarter shops. Oftentimes, we'll start off with 20% and see if the 45% is even needed, if they really want to push back the applicant. But they have every right to use 45% in Connecticut. And if it's going to DOT's review, they were accepted. A transit credit is something similar, right? So if your development is within a half mile, usually is the radius that they use of a, of a train station or even a major bus hub, you can get away with a 20% reduction in trips for being close to transit. That goes for mostly downtowns and cities. And then, and then queuing, they also give some guidance on queuing as we learned about a year ago and kind of took a deep, well, we've always known this, but it's, they keep evolving this a little bit. So for example, you know, a bank, they want to see a drive-through that can hold at least eight vehicles or 106 feet. Car washes, seven, et cetera, coffee shops, 13. So there are some caveats. I should put like an asterisk to this slide. So for example, if they say Dunkin' Donuts, it's 16 vehicles and not 13. And so they do have their, you know, a couple of their own metrics that they threw in there specific to certain brands. Fast food, 12, and baristas, five. So those are the guidelines. And you want that to be sort of free of running through an aisle. So that happens a lot. Like the applicant will try and take credit for not just what's wrapping around the building and actually in the driveway. But they'll say, well, this drive aisle leads up to that. I have another 200 feet. We've got everything, right? Well, no, not really because, as you know, with your old McDonald's here, you went into that. The problem with zoning is that we have to treat all similar uses the same. And if there's a particular drive-through that is more successful in attracting customers than another, the regulations have to apply equally. Right. And so we have to address the maximum queuing that could happen. Right. But that, what I'm speaking about is a gray area because that's not really the driveway for queuing. That's a driveway for circulation, right? Because we can't let their queue back up on public roads. That, that is for sure. That's the absolute. They should keep all their customers onsite. Correct. But what happens then, and you're absolutely right, right? But you want to try at least to push it in the right direction as much as possible because they're not going to, you're going to hear complaints and things anybody else, you know, the site does not work. But yeah, ultimately, you're correct in that the only thing that matters is that it doesn't spill out into the street. And if you're the developer, want a crappy site that doesn't work very well, you know, some places we have at it, some others will push back as much as they can to try and work through here. It's all context sensitive. So I was talking about the trip generation. So the main method for estimating trips is what's called the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And then they have a companion called the Parking Generation Manual. ITE is Institute of Transportation Engineers. So when, when we do traffic studies, many consultants will actually send the data into ITE. It's pretty rigorous. They ask a lot of questions. A lot of firms don't do it. We've done it on a couple of projects. We haven't done it in a long time. It, you know, it takes some work and you're not paid for it and everything. But if it's, if it's handy and it's developed, then you can send it to them. And you need to fill out a whole bunch of information, you know, to make sure it's up to their rigor, to be included in the averages. And it's nationwide, so people are sending them in. Well, and the other question I get is how accurate is it? You know, you said how successful a place is, right? So they're not all the same. But I will tell you, in places that I've gone back and had to do follow-up studies or, you know, they added a new pad to the, to the, to the shopping center that we did the original study and we go back three, four, five years later, it's, it's quite surprising how like close it really is to ITE trip generation and parking generation. So that's all I could say. It's my own experience, is it's usually pretty darn close. It's amazing. And I'll give you a recent example. In Westport, we had done something for the, for the original Y. We did the traffic study. We did the trip generation. We did the estimates. They recently called us to, to, to look at something for them. We counted one of the intersections. I mean, you know, 355 versus 359. I mean, you know, we're numbers like that. I mean, it was incredible. I was like, wow. I mean, that's, it's scary almost, right? So it doesn't always work out that way. But I will tell you that the few times I've had that opportunity to go back and look at something in my own experience, it's been, it's been pretty accurate, pretty, pretty close. Yeah, the question about other trips. So there's two ways. So the bottom box is doing trip generation. Top box does parking generation. Lots of times, there's, there's not always a correlation, but I always like to check it to see if parking trips is kind of matching. Because in the parking one, they give you time of day. They give you peak hour, but they also do like a 24-hour table, a lot of uses. So from the 24-hour table, you can kind of, you know, see what the ins and outs are in between and do they align with the, with the trips? Well, they align with the vehicle trips, but not total trips. And then we talked about the transit credit before. So if I'm generating 100, then 20 of them are expected to be out onto the pedestrian network, for example. So we know that that's happening. So, yeah. So actually, the newer versions of ITE trip generation, you can actually break down. And they have a query and the drop-down tables that sort of lead you along. Are you in an urban or suburban area? And then if so, click here. And then you kind of get down to the appropriate trip generation for the different modes of travel. So again, we usually go a little conservative in the suburbs, unless you're in one of the cities like New Haven, Norwalk, or one of those cities that have a substantial walk and transit. Most land uses, for example, in Old Saybrook are going to be vehicle trips and. Most land uses, for example, may say, broker, like, you know, um, vehicle trips unless you're near a train station.
So on that point, if I could ask.
Yeah.
So we want to get more bicycle trips, and we want it more pedestrian-friendly down in the center here, so how's that factor into the number, sort of planning?
Yeah, so typically, to be conservative, we won't take a credit in the traffic impact study. Um, although there will be, you know, you will be making a dent in, in the trips if you're providing bicycle lane sidewalks. And, and there's kind of tummy that doesn't, you know, recently sidewalk to nowhere came up in one of the applications, and we're like, are we going to make them go through the whole nine yards of installing the sidewalks, right? You guys are probably familiar with what I'm talking about. So, um.
Okay, so it's based on our plans, the plans.
Plans, the context, where are you? Right, exactly, but, you know, um.
It's not just hard data, it's, here's, here's where we are, here's where we're going.
Right, exactly, you want to, and, and what I'll say on the sidewalks to nowhere is, there's a few different opinions on that. I'm of the opinion that you infill whenever you can, and then sooner or later, you know, they start to connect.
Right.
And then, you know, if, if they don't connect, then maybe if you come in as, as the public side, get a grant and, and work on that connectivity to finish off the filling gap. And safe streets for all is a perfect example of an opportunity to fill in those, 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 um, those gaps in connectivity. Or in, you know, so many, you know, uh, bike lanes, it's paint and, and some signs, you know, so. Uh, pavement markings, and it's not zero, but it's low-budget type interventions, and lots of times, there's room for it. You know, on the, on the existing run.
But that's really the thing to think about, that you look at, like, right now, you might thought there's not a lot of pedestrians, because there's maybe not a lot of sidewalks here. But what would the pedestrian look like if we had more? I don't know if the model would like handle that, or you just do like check the boxes, says, hey, maybe if this was more connected, here's what we would expect to see from a pedestrian standpoint.
Right, yeah.
But if you're like a partaking in traffic, you don't want to take it into consideration, because it's like, all right, from a planning, it's like, well, what could the future look like if we did this?
Correct, and I, I, I knew you, you just, you just hit it exactly, uh, which is what I was going to say is, for the traffic study, you want to be conservative and not take any credits, but for planning in the real world, it is going to influence a few trips. Bike racks are the easiest things you can do in a downtown to promote bike trips. Right? It's one of the biggest factors, you look at so many like surveys out there, if you start looking at the bicycle sites and everything, security at the destination, where do I put my bike? It's not even the route there, that's like the top bullet, almost all the time is where do I put my bike when I get there?
Old City Brook has discontinuous sidewalks, they're, we're not completed, right? So if a site is going to claim that some patron's customer is going to arrive by sidewalk, does it matter whether or not there's a continuous sidewalk for a certain distance? Like, you've had Whole Foods up there to go to with the Westbrook direction, there's no sidewalk, right? So maybe you would count for trips by sidewalk only in the easterly direction as far as there is sidewalk.
Right.
You can't assume that people would walk where there is no sidewalk. And similarly, similarly, crossing over the, uh, the railroad bridge, the sidewalks are not A D A compliant. Do those count as sidewalks where the customers could use them or not?
Well, again, for the traffic study purposes, we don't take that credit.
But that's true.
What we were saying is for planning purposes, you know, you want to do it, they will use it, and, you know, like I said, having them pay for that sidewalk, right, is as much as possible for the developers, so that when you come in with the grant or your own money to actually say, hey, you know, all you need to do is fill in a couple of gaps here, and you've got a nice connection to the downtown, or a major destination, or medical center, or whatever it may be, um, school, um, you know, it's.
And they want, yeah, they want the credit for reduced, well, sidewalking, or they can put in sidewalks.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the reason that when, you know, whenever you see a new signal coming to a new intersection, you'll see they'll, they'll do the A D A, they'll do the sidewalk, and it'll go ten feet, you know, like, you got nowhere to go. It's because it's there, so that if and when sidewalks ever do come in, that part of it is A D A compliant, and you need to make them A D A compliant. You don't need to go beyond there as far as installing new intersections and new signals, but you need to make the signal in the intersection A D A compliant, so.
So our regulations require the applicant to put the sidewalk across the entire frontage, so you don't get that crosswalk to nowhere.
Right.
Uh, which, which is tricky, and we are getting, we got a grant for sidewalks to Westbrook.
Right.
And Westbrook got a sidewalk grant pretty much to Vista in that area, so slowly we have a lot of connections coming in, just getting through.
Right, I mean, and I don't know what your experience is, but if you have the gaps and those other pieces, it does help with the grant, because you're saying, hey, I, I'm not asking for something to, to nowhere, to begin with. There's pieces already there, we're looking to, you know, finish this and, and really make it a, a proper, you know, respectable circulation of pedestrians. No more questions. Same thing goes for, you know, upgrades to the signals, right? So that's another thing to look, that's not this slide, but since we're on this topic, you know, um, asking the applicant to maybe make, you know, if the intersection on both sides does not have proper, you know, uh, pedestrian facilities, pedestrian signal ads, for example, that could be something that, you know, could be brought up, you can say, well, your development's pretty close to downtown, we're expecting this to generate pedestrian trips, we have concerns, it's not, it's not compliant, you know, something you can possibly introduce, right? Uh, moving on, Office of State Traffic Administration and O S T A, is everybody familiar with, with O S T A? Um, so, uh, depending on the size of the development, it may trigger a review from, from the state. Um, so, so O S T A does several things, not just, um, the reviews of development, that's on the bottom in the blue. If you, if you have changes to your traffic signals, if you want to change your speed limits, your passing zones, uh, if you want to address issues with through trucks, and, and then if you have any parades or special events that's going to change the, the traffic network, or, or, or restrict, uh, lane usage or block streets, O S T A will do those reviews as well. Um, but this, this is focused on developments. And so what's called a major traffic generator is just a screen that we always do. Um, so if, if the development, and then I'm reading by the bold there, one hundred thousand square feet or more of gross, gross, uh, floor area, or two hundred or more parking spaces, then it's considered a major, major traffic generator. Um, the only exception to that is residential units, where it's a hundred units or less are exempt, so even if it's more than a hundred thousand square feet, if it's purely residential, which we're hardly seeing anymore, usually it's mixed use, it's usually residential above, you know, retail, offices.
The last line says, the, the P and Z, no permits are C O B provided until the O S T A process is completed. Who from the O S T A conducts the process? Do they have a designee for each project?
Yes.
They do, so it comes down to an, an office person, O S T A.
There's about five or six people in the department right now, Joe Lett is the, uh, director. Um, and then he assigns one of the reviewers, who are engineers, um, to re, to review the site plan, to review the traffic study, and check all the boxes for the, for the O S T A, for the O S T A.
Do they, do they farm that work out sometimes? Or do they keep it, it's all in?
No, that's all in-house.
Okay.
The O S T A process and reviews is, is all in-house. Now, we feed them our traffic studies, and we go back and forth with the information that they need um, and facilitate their reviews, but that is strictly, uh, a D O T review. O S T A's part of, uh, I don't know if I said that, Connecticut D O T. Um, and so they're now requiring that P and Z has part of the application to do the O S T A review, that they have a letter from you that says, we're not issuing, because that was happening all over the place, right? And it probably happened here several times, I'd be surprised if it didn't, where the developer would start doing work and start digging, start doing things beyond where they were supposed to be without the O S T A permits. And then O S T A has people that, Connecticut D O T has people that drive around Connecticut, and they'll like see development site, and they'll look on their, you know, their list, and they, hey, this, this is not, I don't have a permit for this. And then you'll get a call, and then the developer will get a call, and then there's, it'll stop work. You know, nobody wants that, so. So this is a great method, I'm very thankful, because we're always caught in the middle of it. But in the past, when it's, I'm sorry about that, when, when that's happened. So that, that's been a, a very good process that they've introduced to the O S T A, uh, reviews. Um, so, so then, if it's a hundred thousand square feet, or it meets the criteria for a major traffic generator, uh, then we'll do the trip generation, we submit that, and if the studies have not identified the mitigation or a traffic study, it gets what's called administrative decision, uh, and then you can just move on with, you know, development, their review is finished. Uh, if there is traffic impacts, identify mitigation measures required, such as, you know, change in lane use or designations, uh, change in, in traffic controls, you could put a stop sign in, or, or a signal, or a roundabout, then it goes into the certificate process, which is lengthy. So another thing to be aware of is, once you're in the O S T A process, it's lately, it's been, they got it down to about three or four months, it was up to six months even from just a, uh, the administrative decision. They've moved staff around, they've gotten more staff into their department. Uh, lately, it's been three, no more than four months for the administrative decisions. Certificates is a wild card, depends on the site, depends on the mitigation, depends on what's needed, but if it's a certificate, you're looking at at least six months. It could be up to a year, it could be more. That depends on what's required in the back and forth and the cooperation of the applicant. So just something to be aware of. Um, okay, so development trends, what are we seeing? Um, we're seeing less and less green sites, which I'm personally very happy about, right? It's more and more redevelopment and environmental sites that are being reused and cleaned up. Um, infill and reuse of existing, uh, even buildings, right? They're not just tearing them down, sometimes they're reusing the buildings. And the infrastructure, uh, is the majority, I would say seventy-five percent, plus or minus of, uh, traffic studies, peer reviews I'm doing are, you know, are infill and, and reuses. Uh, residential mixed use with, like I said before, first-floor retail, restaurants, there is not a lot of just pure residential either anymore, right? Those are subdivisions for the most part. The infills and the downtown projects are almost always residential over or something. Um, banks are going by the wayside, as less and less people use the banks, and they're being reused, uh, quite a few of them are turning into cannabis, as, as, uh, they seem to work, work well with the way they're laid out and the, and cannabis reuse, and, uh, residential mixed use, um, and, and daycare, that example I gave before was an actual, uh, bank to, to a daycare facility where they're using the building, and, and just really uh, rearranging the, the parking lot and landscaping for the playgrounds and, and their own circulation. Um, fast foods and coffee shops, of course, as you guys know very well, pads with, with drive-throughs, without drive-throughs. Um, the other thing that's happening, um, is the changes in the way drive-throughs and the pads are being used with technology and phones these days. Um, so Chipotle, I think in Danbury, I have to go by, I haven't been there yet, um, it's exclusive, no cash drive-through. So it's all order ahead, right, on your app, and you just go to the drive-through and pick it up.
Depending machine.
You can do that to McDonald's?
Yeah, depending machine, yeah, yeah, great, I'm going to use that, that's a great comparison. And, and that, it's, have you seen the Seven Brew?
No.
And the Seven Brew is literally like practically a vending machine.
Like photo, like?
You remember the old photo?
Photo back?
Yeah, okay, so, you know.
Old City Brook has regulations.
I can't use photo back to, to many places, because people don't know what I'm talking about.
We have minimum buildings and have regulations, so that for the sake of land use, that a building doesn't become restricted to only one use for one business.
Right.
The building should be adaptable for different businesses in the future.
Right.
Because as you pointed out, self-businesses go away all the time.
Yeah, exactly, and that's, that's another, I don't have this in these slides, but that comes a lot up with the applicant reviews, is, yeah, okay, we understand that that's what you're going to do. But before this is even over, you can sell this, and it's going to, somebody else is going to do it something differently, and now approve the lane use, and we have them, I'm stuck with that operation. Seven Brews are, um, very small, little buildings, everything is drive-through or walk up to the outside. They have a separate building for the refrigerator. It's on the same concrete pad, right, but it's, it's a little, you know, lean-to, you know, and, and a refrigerator. And they're making coffees, and they make some frozen drinks and stuff. It's all, it's all drive-through, and in a town that we just didn't know it. Um, but, um, yeah, they're, they're starting to pop up in, in the northeast now. So, the, the main packs. Um, and then, um, and then eight thirty Gs, of course, are, are popping up everywhere, and really, the, as far as traffic in our reviews go, it's, it's safe. And, uh, the, the one safety issue that seems to have been, um, um, uh, metric that is used to deny the application has been sightlines. So if they don't have adequate sightlines, uh, it's not safe, and, you know, there's your check-the-box type of thing. Um, it, it could be con- context-sensitive. Fairfield just recently, you know, denied one, we, we didn't say anything, you know, from the traffic engineering standpoint, we were like, you know, here it is, here's the data, here's the analysis, you know, here's the activity on the block, there's no crash, you know, this is, and they denied it, and my understanding is they might be, you know, taking that back, I don't know if you follow what's happening in their towns, but. So that the context of, you know, putting a twenty units on a single-family, you know, street with all single-family units, generating more trips and, and non-vehicular trips and walking, and, you know, cars and people walking their dogs, this particular street has no sidewalks, right? So all the activity that does happen, it's enabled. Um, they tried to kill it, or tried to, you know, deny it, and, and by using that argument, my understanding is it probably did not hold. It's tough. But sightline so far has been, you know, the one that always seems to work. Um, traffic impact studies, mitigation, and safety improvements. Uh, so, you know, what, what some, some places want to do more than others. Uh, I had a, this was an interesting one, not the one that's on the board, but the, um, uh, in Darien, they want to put in a car wash directly across from a, a tea intersection. There's a restaurant that's been closed there now for quite a while, it's not the greatest, it's Boston Road, so it's, it's, it's busy. Um, and the applicant wanted to put a signal in, because they felt it facilitated access to their site, you're not, if you're on the other side of the street, you're not going to drive by, you're more, you know, going to make the trip. There are car washes across the street further down, right? So he wanted, they wanted to be as competitive as possible. Uh, D O T turned them down, even though they were willing to pay five hundred thousand dollars for, to implement a signal, which passed a lot of, so there's eight warrants, there's actually fifteen, but there's eight new ones. And, um, Connecticut D O T only looks, and it's a slide coming up, so I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but the eight-hour warrant is the only one with this. So, this is, uh, where's this? Okay, this Cemetery Street, and that's the cemetery in Norwalk. Um, that's the, uh, the Bank of the Lower corner there, and they have quite a, a development going in there, again, same thing, uh, over a hundred residential units over retail, very, very nice design. Um, the, the town, the city of Norwalk had this master plan that you see there to make all the improvements for bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. The cemetery itself, uh, is just a wrought iron fence right up against the street, they're going to create a sidewalk. Um, and, you know, a lot of other interventions. Uh, the applicant, um, is taking this like one step further, so those two lanes that you see there, they're going to, they narrow it down to one lane. uh, which also, uh, reduced speeds and also, uh, improved sightlines coming in and out of, uh, their driveway. So their driveway is gonna go here. And I think we'll have it on the next, uh, slide. But we look at the traffic impacts, pedestrian bicycle infrastructure, safety sightlines, internal circulation, so there, this is the same, uh, location, here's the only in and out. There's a right there, that's the entrance exit. Uh, it was opposite that triangle which you can, uh, push it up in my voice. Uh, right there, you can see the old island underneath. They, they made the island smaller, uh, and. Can you see my cursor moving over there? I'm trying to get up in these things. I'm gonna talk to it up there, that's okay. So, remember, they had two lanes, uh, so now we have one lane. They did not have a buffered bike lane, we added that, we kept the parking. Um, the island was this shape over here, uh, which they looked at this, but all, there's, there's grading issues and everything that you can tell from the plan view. This is where it wanted to be, there was an option to put it here, but now you're around the turn, so we reconfigured all of this, um, and then we reconfigured buses, we're already going over, trucks, I mean, we're already going over the island that was here. So, um, we designed something like this, which is also something that's a new trend. Um, it's called a truck apron. So the curb is really out here for most traffic. Even the pedestrian walkway goes through the truck apron, but it's a mountable curb, it's hard surface. In this case, we put cobblestones in this design, it's part of a roundabout, so without the apron, treatment matches what goes around the roundabout, which serves the same purpose for the trucks to be able to mount and, and the back end of the trucks, you know, that trail and need a different radius than cars and other vehicles. Uh, so we put that into the design to facilitate, you know, keeping the narrowness of the roadway, but allowing the, the, the trucks to use it and make it, again, um, a trade-off for slowing them down, a sharper turn and, and a shorter pedestrian crossing. And we have all the elements that were in, so this was a really good example of working with the, uh.
Where is this, where is, where is, uh, Norwalk still?
Yeah, this is Norwalk, this is the cemetery, Cemetery Street, South Norwalk. Oh my god, are you familiar with it?
I know where that is.
Uh, East Norwalk, sorry. It's the second train station, no, they have two train stations, it's the eastern one.
So one of the techniques. It's close, oh, so if one of the techniques of traffic calming is to make a more ninety-degree corner turn for vehicles.
Right.
And this, from the old to the, to the new.
Yeah.
Is closer to, closer to ninety than it was before.
Right.
And the idea is that people won't be able to turn the corner at, at such a high speed. So if the pavement there is to enable trucks to navigate the corner, do people drive on those truck surfaces or do they stay on the regular?
The, the, the front of the truck will stay on the, on the street.
The truck can use the service, but.
Right, the back tires though, because the way they crack, will go there. And they'll go slow because now they have that mountable curb and so.
The cars, so cars tend to stay off the truck.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'd be like a speed bump, especially if it's cobble like you.
Yeah, yeah.
Until they cut, until they, when they're doing, go higher speeding.
Yeah, I guess.
Wouldn't be close.
I guess if you're an off-road trucker kind of guy, you know, if you're one of those, maybe. But no, they, it seems to be a very nice design. New York City is starting to implement similar designs that, uh, for the truck aprons. And, and, because, you know, they're the, they're the, probably the most progressive, you know, municipality in the country. They like tightening their, you know, anything they can do to help the pedestrian and, um, you know, patient zero.
So Old Ciprca has a problem in that from one sixty-six NACIS place and where you showed Whole Foods
Mm-hmm.
to get to the Baldwin Bridge, there's only one road essentially you can take. Every car going from one end to the other has to go through the intersection at McDonald's. And they turn and go up in a hill maybe or, but they have to go through that one intersection. And so without any alternatives, isn't there some mathematical limit to the number of vehicles that can get through?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's capacity analysis, that's what we do for, in the, in the traffic studies. Absolutely, now, the issue becomes is what's the incremental delay or queuing? And is that an impact? So, in the city, uh, again, New York City, they have, uh, impacts spelled out specifically. Most municipalities, towns, small towns and urban rural United States do not have a, in their, you know, in, uh, anything, um, documented as far as what, what is impact. They rely on us, they rely on the context. Is, does the queue go through the next intersection? That's typically a queuing impact and concern. Like now it doesn't reach the, it doesn't block the, the adjacent behind the signal, let's say. But I do my capacity analysis and I show we're gonna add a hundred feet of queuing and now it's blocking the intersection. Now, what can you do to help mitigate that?
Well, adding, adding, adding lanes is not a good answer.
No, right, exactly. And then it's decision time. Uh, the other thing is how much delay is added? Uh, I'll use that car wash in the side street. The side street in the morning is a popular route out of the residential neighborhood to get, everybody to get to work. And, you know, it just has that short period of time, it's the only time of day. You probably have similar, you know, experiences where you live and drive-through, where there's that one choke point, that one intersection and back up for half hour, hour a day when everyone's going to work. But the rest of the day, it's crickets, you know, it's, it's kind of quiet, it's not a problem. So what do you do, right? You know, that's a tough call, right? So, when we looked at it, it was interesting and for an unsignalized intersection, so stop signs are very sensitive once they reach that capacity. Because you get that person that's trying to make a left on Boston Road and they, they wait a minute. It takes a minute, right? And now you've got ten cars behind you, half of them are making left, that's five minutes if you're the eleventh car that got there in, in that time period, right? So now I have a development, it's gonna add five more cars to that. Well, when I do the average time, the average time to get through the intersection went from, let's say, a minute and thirty seconds to four minutes. Oh, right? Everybody goes, oh, that's, that's an impact. Well, the queue, there's only two more cars. So, is it an impact?
Yeah.
We tend to say, no, it stops.
The level of service doesn't change?
The level of service does, well, no, if it was already, in that case, it was already an F. It was already a fail and it was already over, uh, sixty seconds. But we get that all the time with side streets and, you know, that whole sort of scenario that I just said. So, you know, and again, that, it, it's an impact on delay and, and that's the other thing, the software, that's one area that the software is not great at. It's stop signs, once they reach capacity, it just blows it up exponentially like a minute and a half. You know, it was only a few trips, I don't lose that number, but I don't think it was more than ten. It went up like, you know, three times. Right? But it makes sense also, kind of, you know, so it's, it's, you know.
If the future entails increasing residential density near an intersection that has five lanes wide, um, what's, what's the answer in terms of crosswalks? Do you have a button that chucks down all traffic so they can cross anywhere? Or is they have only two crosswalks?
No, they, you know, we, we re-time the signals for, to allow the appropriate pedestrian crossing. So unless you push the button, it's going to keep giving the green time to the side street, the main street for whatever it's programmed for. When a pedestrian comes to push the button, if you had a two-lane road, three and a half feet per second is what we use to figure out how long you need to cross the street. And you were, you know, you were, let's use three seconds and ninety feet for easy math, right? You've got thirty, uh, um, thirty seconds that you need to, to cross, three times thirty, ninety seconds, right? I mean, ninety feet. And now you add, you know, lanes, well, now I need to make sure that button push is reserving enough time to cross, which means you're taking time away from your movements, but only when the button's pushed. So you have to rerun the, the capacity analysis, it's not a, it's, it's, it's not a, a straight line.
At Elm Street near, stop the corner which has the shopping center, that's a, from, not, not the Chucky side of the intersection, but tomorrow across to the Old Ciprca Shopping Center, the time signal for the pedestrian push button is twenty-two seconds.
Right.
That's a long time, but you, but you need seventeen to get across.
Correct, and then you need a minimum of the flashing, don't walk, right? So sometimes you, the green is only for like three seconds and in boom, it's just, right? So that's, that's how the timing. Um, and again, in, in Connecticut, this is another trend, I think they have something on it coming up, um, is what they call exclusive pedestrian crossings versus concurrent. So exclusive is what you used to see until a few years ago, everywhere in Connecticut, you push the button, all directions stop and all pedestrians get the green. It's also known as a Barnes dance, not because of a barn, the guy, I always thought it was a barn, I swear, until like, I don't know, ten years into my career, and then I found out that the guy who first developed it was named Barnes. So, and it's with an E, I think, Barnes.
Right.
Um, anyway, so that's the exclusive, right? That stops everybody in their tracks, even if just you're only walking here, all the other three crosswalks are getting the pedestrian greens and it's across and it's very efficient. Because we've reached, you know, the, the, the tilting point in so many places in congestion in Connecticut, now, uh, DOT is allowing, they used to never allow concurrent, you, just every time we tried it, we were like, but look, there's hardly anybody making a right turn, there's no conflicts, it's safe. Then, now it's, it's, well, I've tried concurrent. You know, if we have an issue and, and we're trying to mitigate it, we, you know, go to concurrent right away as long as there's not another, as long as you're not introducing the safety concern.
Someday they'll have cameras with sensors who will keep track of where the people are.
Right.
And maximize the.
Get all the data, a little bit into that coming up also.
Somebody working on that?
Yeah, we got the future, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so I, that, that is traffic studies. And now we're talking about some of the changes and, and trends. So manual uniform traffic control devices is sort of our bible as far as what we can do, uh, to, you know, for the design of streets for, for all users. And, um, you know, you can, you can see from the cover of it that the trend has been more and more away from, uh, moving traffic to moving all, um, users safely and efficiently. Um, it's not a roadway design manual, but it gives guidance on treatments for, you know, if you're going to design the roads, what you should be considering. Um, and then the local agency's design and, and decide and design features. Now that said, there are in MUTCD directives that say you shall versus you should, um, and shalls need to be incorporated. So if, if it says you shall put a pedestrian signal in this situation, you have to do it. You shall meet eighty-eight compliance, you have to do it. You should leaves a little bit of leeway, but you better be able to say why you didn't, right? So shoulds don't need to be, you know, shush aside. Uh, they need to be, in the past, they were like, eh, you know, it's a should, don't worry about it, right? That no longer is the case. Now when you go for your reviews, you, you shouldn't be able to say why you did not do it. Um, okay, so the emphasis is on vulnerable road users, speed limits in the yearing studies. So, uh, we used to have to go through the warrants, right? Now it's also context and function. So if you don't meet the warrants, you can still put in a signal as long as you can come up with a good argument. So this is very helpful for us because many times we had, you know, what you'd call borderline or safety concerns, but didn't quite check the box. Uh, now you have a little more to argue, uh, the case for wanting to bring, uh, a, a signal. Um, the implementation now of the pedestrian signal heads. Uh, and then of course addressing pedestrians with disabilities, which is APS for short, the Accessible Pedestrian Signals. Um, they have braille, they also put out the sound, um, the beep for it. If they don't put out the beep, then they, they should say the direction of the, of the street that needs to be crossed. Um, uh, these are just some examples, there's also some compliance dates that are in MUTCD. So municipalities and TPW should be aware of, of those compliance dates. Um, so, you know, if you're doing upgrades to your longitudinal markings, you know, September, it's, you know, by September twenty-sixth, you've got to implement retro reflectivity. Where before that, if you can get the project in, you don't necessarily need to meet these requirements. So these are just things to be aware of for the time being. We talked about some of the quick builds, um, so this is now in MUTCD. So for example, this, that is a great example of one for safe use to school. Uh, you can try out, you can implement it on the, on, you know, inexpensively, you don't have to wait for, you know, a, a, you know, a, a capital project to come in, you know, you can do this relatively inexpensive. You can test it out to see if it's working, to see if it's even work. You know, going, you know, when you do have money to implement the, uh, the ball bouts or the curb extensions. Uh, two white lines, by the way, in MUTCD, this was one of the big finds for New York City way back when. I actually was working with the head engineer who, who read it and go, you, if you read this carefully, I put down two white lines, that's the equivalent of a curb. And that's what it says in MUTCD and that's how that whole thing started. The whole two white lines and all the paint that you see in the city and now in NACTO, if you're familiar with NACTO, National Association of City Transportation officials. Uh, is another, uh, guidance that's getting a lot of weight and actually has influenced MUTCD to a point where they put this, uh, this stuff in it formally now. Um, so there's guidance on, you know, on how to design these things and properly and, and implement. Um, colored textures, types of textures, you know, crosswalks used to have to be what I call piano keys, right? The, you know, that, that design, you know, now they've actually put in textured pavements and crossings with, you know, that was, that was never in the official MUTCD. Um, you know, what do colors mean, green is, you know, used for bike lanes, that red moonish color is used for bus lanes, et cetera. Um, and now they're starting to authorize signs for electric vehicle charging. Uh, an interesting note, I don't know if it's on here, I'm missing new part, new provisions for agencies that are preparing, promotes national conformity, provisions optional, no requirements to fit roads. Um, but I need to add to this is, um, I, I have to check this, I'm pretty sure, once you put a sign on a highway that says EV charging stations this exit, you need to keep that wayfinding all the way to the charging station. So that's not enough to get them off at the exit and then, right, you know, you have to, so like, you know, it doesn't take much, right? You usually see that anyway, with the hotel that way and the fast food this way and the gas station that way.
Oh, it's all.
Now there's gonna be a little EV, you know, like.
All the time, still say phone.
There you go, just, just replace them all with EV and be good to go. Uh, so yeah, a lot of consideration is now happening for electric and, and automated vehicles.
Just like the self-driving cars and stuff?
Yeah, right. Um, signal warrants, uh, I mean, yeah, signal, traffic signals, again, as I said, there, there, um, you know, they're, they're being, some of them being taken out, um, uh, New Canaan, I was, I'm doing a site in New Canaan, uh, just about to start to see if we can remove two, two traffic signals in their downtown. So, um, just kind of progressive stuff that's happening out here. But eight-hour warrant, it's, it's very difficult to meet because you have to meet the threshold for eight hours. It doesn't need to be continuous, but it could be four hours in the morning, it could be four hours in the evening, but it needs to be some eight hours on a typical day. Uh, you know, ignore the, the tables and all the numbers, but those are the thresholds uh, that, that need to be met on the main street and the side street. There's a chart and you see whether you land on top of the, the graph or, or below the line, uh, to see if you meet the warrant, none of the other warrants, um, are, uh, does DOT even really consider. You know, maybe safety, that's about it, um, but even with that, it's tough. Um, but even with that, it's tough. Um, on, on the flip side, you say the word roundabout and they're like, oh, let's take a look at it. So, um, you know, they, they are, they are popping up more frequently everywhere. Um, and they are being considered more and more, um, for, uh, traffic control, uh, throughout the state.
Craig, just, just, just so you know that, um.
Getting closer.
No, we got twenty minutes, but seven starts our zoning, I look at you, okay?
Yeah, uh, and the slides are on here, but we are getting there.
Um, where at Old Saver, could we have a roundabout?
Yeah, um, well, we can, we can investigate that, you know? I'll bet you there's a few options.
We need our grant and then we're gonna investigate a lot of options.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed if we get that grant.
With this, you definitely.
That's right. Uh, you know, road guides, if you heard the term, typically it's what I'm showing here. It's a four-lane road with two lanes in each direction. Uh, and they give, uh, they narrow the actual lanes to three lanes. And then typically the space that that fourth lane is given is, is turned into bike lanes in each direction. In this case, they turned it into, uh, curbside parking plus a shared bike lane. If you can see that, and that's the same block. I mean, you know, that's, if you see the right side's not developed, it looks exactly the same. The left side is completely developed and, you know, it's, it's placemaking, that's in Stanford. That was a project we worked on years ago, and, you know, it's been built since then. Um, you were talking about smart traffic signals, well, they are here. Um, they're not sensing, um, there are, I believe, some that sense pedestrians, that there's all kinds of technology that are being tested and are in labs or in fake downtowns and places that they're testing and they all have their, their pros and cons. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, for pedestrians, somehow the, the physical actuation is always seems to be coming into play, no matter how much they try and do a hands-off approach. Same thing for the bicyclists. You know, they're trying to do, you know, put a sensor in that senses a bicycle. Well, you know, there's, there's other things that get in the way that sometimes it doesn't work or that it's not completely, you know, reliable, so they need, uh, some type of physical, uh, interaction. This is, uh, also Doorwalk. They were, um, I don't know if they're the only one right now in the state that has the adaptive traffic signals. So there are sensors and, and this is in front of the Sonoma Mall. Um, it's, it's that strip of, of signals that they're, they're all talking to each other and the sensors are actually out in front of the corridor, measuring the traffic coming into the corridor from all directions, from the exit, from the five, and, and from the, from the north and south, on this corridor. And the algorithms are running constantly to maximize the, the flows in, in all directions. It's called adaptive, so, you know, most, most signals are, are pre-timed. In this case, there are limits to, you know, they, the light can't stay longer than, you know, for example, sixty seconds in one direction, but it could also show off in twenty seconds if there's no demand there and there is demand in the other direction. So it'll optimize things.
So a lot of the cameras we see, like, we have two new, you know, intersections, we have a lot of cameras. It's kind of like, why are there cameras here? It's really for sensing traffic, not for giving speeding tickets.
Right.
Well, I mean, that was, I, I mean, I learned that from, why are we putting cameras here? Why is DOT putting cameras now thinking we're, we're going away from the old road trip sensors that are failing?
Video sensors are now taking the place of loop detectors predominantly, which are those square sort of rocks that you see, you know, carbonated and covered with epoxy that's doing electromagnetic of the car, it senses the metal. And that's how it knows someone's there and doesn't see, usually if it doesn't see anything after ten seconds and, you know, after three or four, whatever the setting is, then it gaps out and gives it back to the, to the mainstream.
These like were better for people on bikes. What time do you come?
They better.
Like the good ones never won't turn for you, you're sitting there like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
These ones better.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Somebody there.
Yeah, exactly. Especially if you can get out to the middle area. But like I said, the bicycles is the challenge. Oh, uh, it was deployed in Greenwich, also, Norwalk England, sorry, I already did. Um, I think this might be my last slide. Oh, no, I do have a little more. Uh, active transportation is, you know, also a trend of, you know, providing infrastructures to the bike lanes, sidewalks, as we talked about, um, you know, for off-road, uh, bike lanes, the, 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 um, bike racks themselves. Um, and then there's a micro grant, I think you guys got one, didn't you?
We get the fact that there's a micro grant.
What I ended up using.
It's gonna be her.
We bought a bunch of helmets to launch for, like, a family bike ride next time.
Five thousand, is that what it was?
Five thousand, and then on October ninth, we're doing the Safe Roots to School through Youth and Family too.
Oh, they're gonna do an audit?
We're gonna have them now to do audits sometime.
They wanna get through the Safe Roots and kind of get every, everybody back to school and then we'll get to.
Right, uh, let me know if I can make it all.
Okay.
I'm trying to make it, absolutely. Um, yeah, I've done quite a few Safe Roots to School studies. Uh, traffic calming, um, you know, again, this, this is a good example. New Canaan, traffic, uh, was cutting through, you see the queue on the right, the other left? The queues in the morning were all the way back, that's a real long queue. It takes about three or four signal cycles to get through. Um, so traffic was cutting through the local street there, um, not just to make rights, but then they were doubling back and getting through the intersection faster to get onto the Merritt, which is, which is no longer. Uh, so that's the, 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 let's see if I can, left corner right there is this corner right here, it's a very quiet, sort of just wide open asphalt intersection, uh, without any controls or speeding, there's a lot of traffic going through here and, you know, you're walking your dog as a resident or you, you know, baby carriage, it'll be big. Um, you know, it's not safe. So they went to, uh, some temporary stuff, they, they, they put out the stop sign. They also put in the, the speed sign to the right, if you can see it, you're speeding. Um, in all the approaches temporarily to, you know, address the situation. We looked at stop control on the lower left, you can see the design. We also looked at a roundabout, you can see the rendering that we did, uh, you know, it roundabout looked like it was the direction and guess what, we're doing stop signs. But we are tightening, so again, we have the truck aprons. That's a, really in this particular situation is to address most of the landscaping trucks. Um, besides that, there's just UPS and vans, the occasional moving truck, whatever, but, uh, you know, there is quite a bit of the landscaping trucks, uh, going through here. And to my surprise, the stop sign won over, you know, what, the momentum was going in this direction. And then at the last minute, whoop, it, it went all towards the stop sign. So what roundabout was, uh, was killed. And one of the reasons for, uh, they were looking at speed humps, this is the same project to, to see if they can even further. Uh, and nobody, once you do a speed hump, this is what you need to do. You know, you can't just put a speed hump on the sign anymore like you used to and you, you probably will see more of that. You're starting to see more and more of anything that's been built in probably the last five years now looks like this. And the pavement markings, the double yellow line on the, doesn't have to go the whole street, but whatever the, the guidance is right there, that's the design guidance on the right for what you need to do if you're putting a speed. If you're putting it on, you know, a, a, a residential road, they typically don't want this type of, you know, uh, visual, you know, craziness in front of the road, right? It totally changes the character of the road and, uh, not so much for the, for a speed hump anymore. Um, here's the last slide, which you guys have applied for. And, um, hopefully we'll be able to leverage, um, some, some improvements in there. Any other questions, feel free.
I just end it there. I have a, well, maybe it's probably a question for you, but it may be interesting to the commission. In the past, we've had developers who come in and say, well, you know, it's level of service D or level of service F. It's not changing. I mean, how does the commission really address that when you have a really bad intersection and you have a level of service D or, or F? And the app goes, well, it's only just two, two more cars a day, you're still D, it didn't go to F. I mean, how, how do you?
Yeah, so it's, it's all about the increment at that point when you're a level of service. When you're D, you're still gonna show, you go from a D to an A, there, you know, that's, even that's misleading because you could be on the cusp, right? You know, over fifty-five seconds delay, average delay is, is the line. So it's thirty-five to fifty-five is a D, fifty-five to whatever is an E, right? And then that upper threshold gets to an F. So if you, you can be a fifty-four and have a D. And that could be, my impact could be fif, you know, increase two seconds to fifty to fifty-six. And now I'm an E and I changed level of service, oh, well, that's not really fair, right? So even the change of level of service has to be taken with a grain of salt. Um, and, and then you, you really gotta go by, you know, a lot of other factors. Um, the queuing is, is one to look at, you look at the other metrics. And then how much is, level of service is just a reflection of delay anyway? So, you know, it's, it's the average delay that we look at and it's a few, couple of seconds now. If it's ten, twenty seconds and you start to slow down, you know, this, this is an impact. What can you do to, either mitigate it, if you can't mitigate it, then it's up to you to say this is what we tolerate or, or not.
But it's hard to win them in court.
Yeah. Although it is an impact, I mean, you can say it, it's a traffic impact, especially if it's, it's exacerbating.
Anybody have their cameras?
We wanna stop sharing so I can check them.
I have a quick question. My understanding is the police department can change the timing on signals?
Um, if it's a state, if it's their, your own municipality, I think even that has to go to OSTA. I'm not, I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so they can't just change it, they have to go through a process.
What's a local traffic authority?
Does that affect the, uh?
Right.
The LTA is your local traffic authority who would put that, you know, request in or, or notify the partner if they wanna change the. I'll, I'll make sure that, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I don't know if anyone else is. If it's not a state road, if you can do it on your own, I don't think you can. I think every, every state.
Right, then. Then it's a trial.
I'll get a statement.
Can you say, like, the big intersections with pedestrians going, walking across? The state is leaning towards allowing one, this pedestrian crossing, the traffic continued in other areas?
Right, well, in the same direction as the main traffic stream.
Right.
So as long as there's a green ball, right, and I'm crossing the street this way.
Yeah.
Right, then that pedestrian can get to cross.
Right.
Which is, until recently, most places across the country like that. Connecticut was very, um, unique in, in their barns dance.
It seems like the intersection in front of Sabre Colm, the monkey farm, yeah, it's very ripe to change. Because they push that button, it takes forever for the walker to walk to a lane. And then you see people taking a corner anyway.
Yeah, do a study and, and, you know, or do some observations and, you know, see if you can see how many times that actually is pushed and how many times pedestrians are crossing.
A lot.
Yeah, so then that's impacting, that's why you're seeing a backup. You know, because, because everybody's stopping in every direction.
Yeah, it's also a very important intersection over a pedestrian's coming, like on the train station and the main street. So it's a great balance, keep the traffic moving, but also a lot of information.
For those two.
So, uh, there is another thing I have to throw into this, I may have had it in the original one and then took it out through these slides. It's called LPI, leading pedestrian interval, and that'll address that concern. So what happens is the light's red for traffic, but I get the walk sign like three, five, seven seconds earlier. What that does, it puts the pedestrian now into the travel lane, so I'm not, right? It's, it's usually a race. If, if I get the green walk at the same time as, as the green and I'm making a right, you're like, I don't wanna wait for this guy, I'm gonna have to wait ten seconds, fifteen seconds for this. Oh, he doesn't look like a fast walker. You know, and you gun it, you, 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 you cut a run, right? So now the LPI, leading pedestrian, you got the red, you gotta stay and the walker or the bicyclist can get a head start.
I think it helps, there's that one angle where when you're turning in front of Sabre Colm, it's such a sloping turn and this crosswalk is so far away.
Yeah.
A little right.
So, so, so LPI combined with the truck apron, right? Because usually the reason that those are such sweeping turns is because it's a truck road or there's a truck activity. And design, because that's the other thing we have to do, is we have to show that trucks can make the turn adequately at whatever the speed is, so if it's thirty miles an hour posted, and, you know, you have to make a, you know, do the auto turn analysis, right? And make sure the trucks can, and that's why we can't have a fifteen-foot radius, we have to have a thirty-foot radius for that corner. So you combine that with the truck aprons. And now you've got, you know, a shorter distance for the pedestrian, you've got a tighter turn for the turning vehicles and it's a nice, it's a nice treatment. So we're done.
Yeah, there.
Two questions on the speed limits.
Yeah.
The police radar gun sign has been at the high school recently.
Yeah.
And it says speed limit thirty-five.
Right.
Is it common for schools to have a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit in front?
Um, twenty-five is more common, I would say.
Yes, yes.
Is it directly in front of the school?
No, it's on Route.
It's, it's Route One, so God forbid it should be twenty-five, you know, I agree with that. Yeah, that, that may be a restriction too. I don't know if a Group One state says you can't post it lower than there.
And the other has to do with what we call Mariner's Way from, you know where that is?
Yeah.
Speed limit out there is board. Any plans that we have seen historically for that section are not gonna do well with a speed limit of forty? How and when is it the right time to get the speed limit lowered to take thirty?
Yeah, let me, I've, I've, I've changed some speed limits in, in Westchester in New York. I have not done any in Connecticut, so let me, let me look into it.
Yeah, a former first electman got Main Street lowered from thirty to twenty-five, but he said it took more than two years.
It, how long was that?
That was like ten, fifteen years old.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's gotten a lot easier, the world has changed now and it's changing speed limits. Town area wide, corridor wide is now a lot, lot easier. Yeah, I, I mean, my example was I did a study. You're supposed to set the speed limit based on, you do the speed study, you do the radar, not with the signs that give you feedback and do it, you know, um, in community, right? So you can see you're out there, um, and you get the samples and then you're supposed to set the speed limit within that range. So if everyone's doing, you know, forty, you can't set twenty-five, right? You gotta set something, people read the road, you know, so you gotta work on the design. But, you know, you can put it a little lower. I went below the threshold, but I argued other things, the context of the road, the users of the road and, you know, the, the number of driveways on the road. And they, they gave it to us, they gave it to the municipality, even though we didn't technically meet the criteria. So, you know, again, we'll look into it a little more. So there were, there were two things, I didn't take notes, there was the speed limit and what was the other one I said I was gonna? Can't remember. Uh, oh, changing signal times, yeah, right?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Very.
Appreciate it.
Anytime, if you have any questions, share them with Chris and Chris, just me or do that. Just share my email. Uh, good luck, I think there, there, there's been a lot of places we can get that, that's, that's, that's.
We got a minute.
Norwalk got one, Sil, uh, what is it, Renner's Field, I'm gonna take a trip up there now. They got one, they did a joint one with Rocky Hill for Silas Dean Carter. So I, you know, most people, most places are doing home line, they went, they went to the right for a car. Okay, and you got it.
Very much. You got about thirty seconds before we, perfect timing. I'll take a, we'll take a, like a three-minute recess, okay? All right, I'm gonna call this zoning commission back to order at seven oh four, uh, continuing with our regular meeting. Uh, so, um, roll call, uh, for this evening is myself, Mark Calorella, Chair, Jerry Lewis, Vice Chair, Bob Friedman and Laura Gray, regular commission members. And seated for John Henry, our secretary this, this evening is Mike Keller. Also, we have Joey and Gally, our clerk, and Chris Costa, our CEO, and Brenda Dyson, our other alternate. And we have one person in the audience and, excuse me, one person online. Regular business, minutes from our last, uh, regular scheduled meeting of Monday, August nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any, is there any discussion, corrections, additions that anyone had?
Okay, some of the, the state was wrong about this meeting. It said that the meeting was August twenty-first, right? It said September twenty-first.
Right.
In the circle bit.
Was it?
Oh, here.
The end?
The commission's August sixteenth meeting will commence at five thirty with the traffic one-on-one, and that should be September.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, what page is that on?
Uh, last page.
I see it. Yeah, I see it.
We got it, okay. Any other corrections, additions? Not hearing any move to vote. All those in favor, sign of saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, passes by zero, zero. There's no correspondence this evening for the, uh, as part of the public hearings, so we'll move on to public hearings. A, the Epic Real Estate Group Application for Special Exceptional Use to Modify Parking Lots and Landscape Areas to Change the Use of Existing Building to Office Spaces and Warehouse Storage at eight oh six Boston Post Road. Assessors map thirty-six, lot one eighteen, Central Business B one District Pedestrian Node. At the request of the apparent applicant, the opening of the public hearing to be continued until October seventh, twenty twenty-four. So, no motion has to be made on that, hopefully, Chris. Nope. So we'll move on to, uh, item V, which is, uh, Tuckman, Application for Special Exceptional Permit to Construct a two thousand nine hundred square foot barn, Chicken Coop, Farm Stand, Parking Area, and the Keeping of Twenty Chickens at One Overlook Drive, map fifty-eight, lots twenty-six and twenty-seven dash one. Residence A A one district. Applicant owner Zachary Tuckman. Action, open public hearing, continue or close by ten seven twenty twenty-four, no later than ten twenty twenty twenty-four. Mister Tuckman, would you answer your tap?
Yes, have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for having me.
So, so yeah, um, we made a couple of advisements. Barn is now cut in half. Put here to minus ninety, a hundred feet from the drop off here. Review area. The barn is a hundred by fifty, now it's fifty by fifty.
Let's take, take, I've just been interrupting you. Quick summary, so Mister Tuckman came to the zoning commission for preliminary discussion several months ago. He went to the wetlands commission. Since you last saw this plan in the preliminary discussion, he's reduced the size of the barn and he has a wetlands permit, just so everybody kind of knows. A little bit of the history, it's been, it has been a while.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, so that's really the biggest amendment to this, um, as far as that goes. Nothing else, um, has really been changed aside from the fact that, um, the farm stand area, it'll still be in a gravel area. But my farm stand is actually gonna be a mobile trailer, so I can bring it to co-ops and stuff, you know, like farmers markets and things. So it'll primarily be parked in the barn when it's not being used. The only time that I'm gonna put it out in that area there is harvest season, which will be around like, you know, right now to October, November. If I have surplus that's not selling at, you know, the farmer markets and stuff, that's where I would offer it. Uh, so I know before I said that I was gonna have, you know, a structure and stuff, okay, that's just gonna be a gravel pad.
So that's changed from what we're looking at on the drawing?
The area hasn't changed.
So it's still gonna be a twenty?
It would be a twenty by twenty pad.
But it'd be gravel home.
Exactly.
No structure.
Exactly. And I put that in my statement of use and everything. So that's there. Chicken coop hasn't changed. That's within guidelines. Um, number of chickens hasn't changed. All the produce is still the same. Uh, the only other change is that the farm crop area has increased by the barn. So the area where the barn would have been there is now going to be farm part as well. So it's just more, more land, grow more stuff.
And where is that, where is that increasing to the farming?
Uh, right, so right behind the barn, um, it it'll be to the back corner there. That was all, you know, pretty much filled with building before. So now this.
So, were the reduction of the barn took place?
Yeah, my surveyor outlined it in like a hoop. It says limited proposed farming, crop and grass around in the blue. Um, and then that'll go all the way, you know, pretty much from driveway all the way wraparound to the back of the building.
You have, you have a mention of, uh, two sheds to be relocated, but.
That was already moved. That's just where the shed used to be.
Oh, it's the black one is where it used to be.
And that's where it's now. That's where it's now. Yeah, it wasn't, um.
I thought there was two that were going to be relocated.
No, no, that's just barn. It's already moved. Yeah.
Yep. Bob, you had a question?
Uh, well, a couple of questions. One was, uh, it's not a zoning area under our review, but I just have to do check and see that twenty chickens in a hundred and sixty square foot area is density that's okay for their health. Right? So even even if it gets moved periodically, I don't know what the square feet per chicken number is.
Yeah.
That's not zoning, but.
I got you. I'll make sure that that, yeah, and I'm, I'm not necessarily gonna start with twenty. I'm honestly probably gonna start with five, because I never raised chickens before tonight. I'm only gonna handle that a little bit before I go entering into the twenty.
The property has at least eighty thousand square feet, so you can get that.
Up to twenty. Okay, perfect. Yeah, and I'll make sure that everything is sized appropriately for how many I have and all.
And a question about the the perimeter outside the the blue half circle line that goes pretty much everywhere.
Yes.
What kind of landscaping is outside that blue line?
That'll just be grass, just grass.
Cause there's not, there's not much of anything between the property line and that outside.
And the wall?
Yeah, well, some areas were clear cut. On the, on the outside of blue half circles.
Yeah.
There's no distance specified on the plan. I looked all over the place. I could measure it. It's greater than thirty feet by the scale of one inch equals.
Well, there, so there's gonna be a, I I would, um, I would like to put some trees down there and stuff like that. I gotta figure out the grading and everything and how it's gonna go, but that area beyond that is gonna be either grass and trees or just grass.
Right, but right now there's nothing specified for that area.
No.
Right, so the areas that were clear cut to the property line will remain clear cut, dirt.
Uh, no, no, it'll, it'll all be finished, like at at the end, like.
No, it's not on the plan. It it doesn't say anything about what's there today, and it doesn't say how, what that distance is from the property line to the blue half circles. And it doesn't say what will be there. We, as a zoning commission, would like to have on the plans written down what will be there. What is proposed to be in that specific distance
Okay.
from the black property line to the blue circle half circle.
How far off am I allowed to come from the street for farming?
Well, there's a line shown on a map that according to the scale.
Yeah.
It exceeds thirty feet. So the zoning commission has an, has an interest in knowing what will be in terms of vegetation will be there in that thirty foot plus distance.
So it's pretty much like my, my idea is as far as I'm allowed to go is as far as I wanna farm. I I wanna farm as far as I can go, but you gotta tell me how far I can go.
Well, it's, it's your proposed.
You, but I just don't know what you allow with agricultural, you know, it's got kind of a gray area.
So the, so the, the black line is the street line. That's the front property line.
Yeah.
And when you go in, there's kind of a dash line where the blue circles are.
Yeah.
That's the thirty-five foot front yard setback for the district.
But in the residence, in the residence district.
So the question is, can he farm within that thirty-five feet?
That's a good question. We've, we've never had that question.
That's, that's the question. That's why there's nothing proposed.
Yeah.
Well, at this point, I would say that there's no, there's no regulation that says that you can't have vegetation of your choosing right up to the property line.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna grow four and out on the road.
Well, as long as it doesn't, a sightline issue too, you don't want, you want people to be able to.
I, I just wanna maximize the land I have to grow the amount that I possibly can.
Well, by, by the same token, the plan should describe what is.
I, I totally agree. I.
What is proposed.
Okay, yeah, I understand. It's just that was more of a gray area for me. That's why there was nothing there. I just didn't know, you know, what I was.
So, so based on, based on what you've just heard, it's thirty-five feet where your blue line is.
Yeah.
What is your preferable distance?
I would.
To the property line.
Most likely, I wouldn't plant anything closer than ten feet to the road.
So, so what you're asking for is up to ten feet of the property line?
If I could have that, that would be great.
That's what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
So closing farm.
And that would be the, uh, it's a, uh, growing of, uh.
Produce.
Produce, corn.
Right.
Whatever the various types of producing.
Exactly, yeah, all nice and neat.
Yep.
Up to ten feet from the street line.
Yeah.
Not to impair any vehicle.
Sightlines are unusual.
But you wouldn't wanna do that anyway. You want to see when you pull out of your driveway.
Exactly, yeah. Honestly, if it, if it seems like it's too close, I'm not gonna go further, just to go further. If it, if it looks like it's blocked in the view, I'm not gonna go that far.
The only, the only concern that potentially we could see here is when you do have a stand to sell produce there, okay, that with that distance of up to ten, ten feet from the road, is there a sightline issue when people are going in, buying something and coming out?
They're all supposed to park in my, I can't say driveway.
I understand that, but you're gonna, on, on, when I'm looking at different split lines.
Yeah.
Um, you're coming now within ten feet of that. It's, it's just a general question. Is the sightline gonna be acceptable?
Okay.
Um, for public safety, for people leaving your property.
Okay.
And maybe ten is too.
Maybe ten is too close, what I did.
Yeah, I think so too.
For that, for that area, maybe.
Twenty feet?
Twenty, twenty-five, I mean.
I think be twenty would work.
It'd be nice to eat some of the thirty-five into the crop, you know, if I, if I can, um. So I mean, I guess whatever seems reasonable.
What, what, what are?
I mean, twenty.
What do the other commissioners feel on that?
I think twenty is good.
Okay. Do you think twenty is better than the ten for the sight line?
Yeah.
Uh, the softness of the curve there probably has decent enough sightlines at ten feet. So I think.
You think ten feet is acceptable?
Yeah, I think ten should start it up, yeah.
Of course.
Really?
Whatever.
Um, along the road, um, yeah. Ten, twenty feet sounds good to me. And then, but we're not talking about the stone wall, so.
No, stone wall, I mean, it's.
You'll be able to farm up to the stone wall.
I wanna be able to drive around the whole crop with my tractor, so at least enough room in between the stone wall and the crop for my tractor to be able to drive around it.
What's that distance for the tractor?
It would, it would, it would be, it would be fifteen feet. Yeah, I would say fifteen feet.
Well, that would even make sense, right?
Yeah. If it's okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to overtake it, you know.
So.
I think more than ten.
All right, so should we make everything fifteen feet from the road and, uh, uh, property lines to be?
Yeah, it's very efficient.
Consistent?
Yeah.
It's fifteen feet?
I'm fine with that. Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
So we'll say fifteen feet.
Okay, okay.
That's better.
I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right.
And I'll just have my guy update.
Yes, you have.
The site plan.
Yes.
Yeah, be in there.
Okay.
If, if approved this evening and with conditions, you would have to update this.
Just give a new site plan.
To, to, through, uh, land use, for, for signatures, without a problem.
Yep.
Brenda?
The, um.
I have one quibble about.
Go, go ahead, go ahead, Brenda.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
The everything that you proposed to plant is sort of low, but you want apples. So where are you planning to put the apple trees?
The apple trees are probably gonna go in my garden, my house, like near my house, cause I don't want the deer, you know, the the closer it is to my house where the lights are, I kind of have this thing that I think the animals stay away from a little bit more. Um, cause we have a lot of deer over there.
Yeah.
So they'll, they'll desiccate trees and everything else, so that's, that's gonna be interesting.
Would we need a, a planting, plant for the trees?
Well, it's part of the farming, I mean, I guess it depends on what the, the crops are and the plants.
They don't need, talk a little apple trees, tiny guys.
Cause you may wanna change that prop or shouldn't it have more apples or some corn?
Right. Yeah, right.
It's not as though we're doing a landscaping plan with trees on the street.
Okay.
So how is it you'll have is corn there?
Yeah, yep, exactly. Yep, yeah, and I, and I plan to put all the corns in the back. I'm gonna put all that to the back, cause I don't want that. I want everybody to see the other stuff.
Yeah.
You'll know there's corn there, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So you'll see the corn in the back, but all the other stuff, the tomatoes, potatoes, the carrots, all the other stuff I want.
It's gonna be closer to the road.
That'll be all up front, yes, yeah. A lot, a lot of people will be able to see it being harvested, you know.
In the statement of use, uh, in the second paragraph, um, second sentence, as well as chicken coop on wheels to move around my property for fertilizing and grazing. The first word in, after the open parenthesis sign says, within the seventy feet required limit from all property on street lines. That should be outside the seventy feet required limit. Inside the limit would be closer to the property line. Now, you're gonna move the chicken coop around since outside the seventy feet limit, right?
But not park it. It'll always be parked within seventy.
I understand, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be inside, oh, it's not gonna be within the seventy feet required limit. It's gonna be outside the seventy feet required limit. The seventy feet required limit is on the perimeter of the space.
Yeah.
So your chicken coop is gonna move around outside the seventy feet.
During the day and then it comes back to the same time.
Not within the seventy feet.
Okay, okay, continue, yeah. It's just a terminology.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
No, you're right.
Um, I'm sorry, did you, okay. Explain to me how you're gonna operate the farm stand? Because the way the statement of use implied that it was gonna be six or seven days a week for
Yeah, sure.
Service for multiple hours. And today you're, tonight you're saying that it might be on an occasional basis.
Yeah, I, I, I updated all that in here. I said that it'll be seasonal, um, June through October, hours, if it's out there, would be dawn to dusk. It's, it's mainly just in, I'm mainly just using it for excess.
To sell your.
It's just, it's just gonna get rid of the stuff that I'm not already, so it's not even guaranteed the thing will make it out there if I sell everything, you know, in my, in my other outlets.
So it's, it, it's, uh, dusk to dawn.
Dusk to dawn.
Seven days a week. No.
Uh, no, not, well, I mean, yeah, it would, i- if it's out there, but it'll, it'll probably never be out there seven days a week.
But you're, you're. But ideal west says that it's seven days a week from dusk to dawn.
Yeah.
When it's out.
Granted, I have, yeah.
It may not be out there continuous days of, of a week.
Yes.
Cause of based on availability of crop.
Yeah, and I wanna park it inside. I really don't wanna leave it outside, really, you know, that's. I like the clean look. I want everything to be nice and clean and put away. And that's the main reason for the barn is just to be a home for everything, you know.
And what is the, uh, the use of the barn?
It's gonna be primarily for the farm. Uh, the, I mean, my area is cut half now, so it's, it's gonna be, every ounce of space is gonna be used. There's gonna be a prep wash area, everything like that, like to clean everything, get it, you know, boxed up after we're done. Um, all the attachments for my tractor, which are gonna take up like a good forty percent of the place.
But not the actual piece of equipment, cause it's too big.
No, no, this, it's like a farm tractor, not like.
Oh, yeah.
It's not like a monstrosity, like it's just a, like.
So for that.
Those things you drive by by Saber Ford.
Yeah.
Or I mean, not Saber Ford.
No, I know.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, those, like those tractors.
Okay.
And you know, any kind of, um, you know, the, the chicken seed, stuff like that, like any stuff I don't want animals getting to.
Yeah.
That'll be stored in there.
So a condition of approval could be that it's, the barn is for agricultural use only.
Well, if I, all right, but I wanna park my pickup in there, um, if I, I have another car that I, I might wanna store in there, I mean. It's not, I don't really see why. So, I don't know, which way.
The bar, the barn is there for the application and use of the intended. Use of the property, which is agricultural, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But if I have stuff that I like my outdoor kids' stuff that I wanna store, am I gonna get in trouble and have a letter because I put that stuff in my barn?
I think an occasional, you know, bike or things like that that you might store, uh, uh. Would might be acceptable to the commission, but as long as the uh barn is used primarily. For agricultural use rather than um equipment storage.
No, I'm not.
Uh, equipment repair, other than, you know, farm tractor breaks down, you have to.
I can change my oil there on my tractor.
Yes, I'm not saying that, but we don't wanna store.
I just wanna make sure I'm not limited to like only bringing food in this place. I mean, I can, if I wanna have a party in there, I can have a party in there, can't I?
You have two garages too, right?
Yes, yes, I have two uh uh detached garages, yes.
And what will they be used for?
They're used for storage right now with my cars and all my kids' toys and everything else.
Well, we're looking at a at a permissible um use uh on the uh for the property, which is agriculture. That's that's the that's the intended use.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as the barn is used for agricultural purposes. We're fine with that. We don't wanna see another business.
No.
In there.
Yeah, it's just my apartment, so.
Okay, just wanna.
My heavy growing operating business is not based out of there. It's a mailing address to my house. I know that that's been the whole.
No, it's not. I wanna make sure that what we're looking at and what the commission is, because we're looking at what you're presenting to us this evening. And and we're looking at what we have to.
Understand, I just don't wanna put my car in there and have people send me letters.
No, it's that's that's not what we're, that's not what we're saying, okay?
Yeah.
But the but the um permitted use of the property will be in the barns for agricultural purposes. Any other use than that, either on the land or through the barn, is not permissible.
Okay, are you saying the same for my garages, like a lot of.
We're talking about.
Well, okay, but it's on it's on the same parcel, so I just wanna make sure.
I I think what he's trying to be clear for, there's no other businesses other than the agricultural businesses.
Understood.
Pose on the property.
And and.
As a part of this approval, I think, for potential approval.
Yeah, potential for approval.
Yeah, as long, yeah, as as long as I'm allowed to park my truck in there every night. I mean, I can't fit my truck in those regular garages, so I I should be allowed to keep my.
Well, pickup truck is a farm truck.
Sure, but it won't. I'm not necessarily.
So I'm. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that it needs to be farm plates or something like that.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
You have to make deliveries using some type of vehicle, pickup truck is used.
Absolutely, I have a trailer.
Yeah.
I have a trailer, yeah.
Just wanna be clear.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'm. Commissioners have any, yeah, Lauren?
You mentioned the prevalence of deer and trying to keep deer. Off your property, are you thinking of doing anything with fencing?
It's not a big area fence. I don't know, um, I mean, I would I would have to go to something for a fence anyway, right? Separately, if I wanna do that.
Probably don't.
No?
Probably not.
Um, I mean, I I if I do.
I don't see any reason why you'd have to come in for a fence.
If I do put a fence, it's gonna be the, um, is it called stockade? Like that sound? It would be like that.
Real.
It would be close to the. It would look like a farm. I don't, I I had privacy fence there and I took it all down, I ripped it all down. It was like twenty thousand dollars worth of fence I should pull out. It's not gonna fit the farm load. So I want everything to play farm, so I would say if I was gonna fence again, I would fence it with that type of fence. Um, it would just, it would be, it would probably take me a little bit to get all that fence put in.
It's a lot of fence.
It's a lot.
I'm gonna do it by myself, so. Uh, but yeah, that's what I would say, like that would be my only deterrent to that, would be a fence. There's nothing else I can do.
There you go.
They gotta eat it.
Oh, I know, I I just see huge deer fences.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want that. That's ugly, no, it would be like that.
They're wider, but they're really tall.
Now, yeah, I see some of those little camp, they don't, they got those around the Christmas tree farms, cuz they need those.
A road and that's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, if I do it, I'll just do that side, I don't think I'll.
Alright, any other questions?
Question.
Oh, sorry.
At the last uh meeting, you presented.
Yeah.
Uh, a neighbor was upset with her stone wall.
I fixed that. I sent Chris pictures of it.
She's happy.
I don't know what she thought.
So just so that that was outside of the, you know, the public hearing, I don't know. I don't I don't know the details of. Who's satisfied with.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as it was.
I I repaired it. I I put the rocks back the day after the meeting, so.
Okay.
The day after, I went and did it. I have the pictures, timed, danced and stated, but I also sent Chris, which I have to submit.
Any other commissioners have questions or comments? Nope, okay, so I will make a motion. Or app, I'm sorry, it's public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, so if there's anyone, there's no one in the audience, um, and there are, there's one person online. Uh, person online have any uh wish to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application? Please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone raise their hand, I will make a motion to close public hearing, second, second above creedman. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero. Are we prepared to deliberate on this this evening?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, uh, that, I'll make a motion. Uh, for uh to approve Tuckson application for special exception permit. To construct a two thousand nine hundred square foot farm. Chicken coop farm stand, parking area, and the keeping of twenty chickens at one overlooked drive. Map fifty-eight, lots twenty-six and twenty-seven dash one, residence A A dash one. District with the following conditions. Do you have those? None, Chris.
With with the with the recognition that as a special exception, it's a use permitted in the district, right? Even though this is unusual, but under favorable circumstances such as presented, will be appropriate, harmonious, and desirable. And and, alright, period.
Period, okay.
The we have the. The proposed farming um use operation, the.
Yeah.
Two plants um will go no closer than fifteen feet from the street line. It will not be planted in a manner to impair any vehicular or pedestrian sight line. Second.
Oh, yeah, uh, finish with that. We also have the condition. Um, that we just spoke about that is it is for agricultural use only.
The barn.
Right.
No, no, outside.
Barn, and no outside storage, and uh the other condition. That no other uses are permitted on the property.
Other business.
Other business uses.
Or use. Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, move to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, passes five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, so Chris, I'll just get that updated and then comes to you.
What, just showing the limit?
For permit, like, cuz I gotta get my, uh. You know, the per society, the players, or anything like that, I don't know, what's like the next?
So I think the only revision is like moving that line.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean.
You do that, you also need a signature block on here.
Yeah, signature block for the chairman to sign.
We need a signature block on the on the.
Approved by the zoning commission.
Signature.
So bring those in and then we'll get you.
You put it right on.
On my my surveyor will know.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell them to the zone.
Yes.
And then just bring that to you and then and then do the other stuff.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Make it, be be sure to stop by, man, it's on, I'd like to see you guys, so, thanks, it'd be cool to show you what I think.
Um.
Thank you.
Moving, moving on to um committee representative and staff reports.
Alright, staff report, um, so we did receive. Um, a signed contract, Cantina Beach on Boston Post Road. Uh, for the sidewalk installation, we did receive a permit denial from DOT. I did ask Mr. Castro if he could. Explain how long it would take um to get the permits and what his plans were to proceed with this. I mean, he happens to be in the audience, so I don't know what. Uh, he just.
Go ahead.
He's there, he's.
Mr. Castro, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm DeSonia.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Wilson's working, he's cooking right now. Do you wanna see him?
Nope. You're okay? Yeah, you can speak on his behalf.
Um, so we received the letter, like, I'm new on this. I don't know what's the next. I know the contractor had to do the approachment. From the from the contract, but I don't know why it's gonna be the next step. Like my husband said, he can start as soon as possible, but I don't know what's gonna be the next step, what it goes next, so we can start.
So you you need to address the comments from DOT before you can start to get a permit from them.
Okay.
Permit was denied based on the reasons listed in the uh letter that was was sent to you. So those have to, before you can proceed.
Okay, so, um, cuz Joe was telling me, he sent me an email. So the letter's denied, so what is the next step, so?
You need to work with Joe to get an approval from DOT.
Right.
So you can go forward and put the sidewalks in to meet your zoning approval.
Right.
Okay, approval from DOT and the signs from zoning, right?
Yes, but you have to work with Joe to get that done.
Okay. I'm gonna write it down, okay.
Yeah.
Have you seen a copy of the letter from DOT?
Yes.
Wilson sent it, okay, so it spells it right out on uh on there what needs to be done and resubmitted. But you'll need to review that with your um engineer and submit it for approval. Then once that comes back with an approval, then you can move forward, but until then, you can't do anything.
Okay, so he will, he, what he stated on the email, he said you have to talk to the town about the agreement. For maintaining the trees along along the street.
We we will do that, that's fine, it's the.
He says your contractor had to take out the DOT encroachment permit to do the actual work.
Your contractor has to do the the sidewalk, we'll take care of the trees. If you can get us what we need to sign for the trees, we'll do that.
Okay.
But the.
Okay, so I will talk to Joe. And see what it goes from there.
So, yeah, we're willing to sign what we need to for the trees, but you need to get your permit for the sidewalk that may just.
Okay. I'm trying my best. I'm trying to.
So they had a number of different three, two, two complete sets of the. Of the latest town plans, an encroachment permit, a bond, proof of minimum insurance. And so forth, so if you can get us whatever we need to sign for the trees and you can get the remainder of that to DOT. We'll go from there.
Okay. Okay, so I will talk to, um. To Joe tomorrow and 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 I'll be communicating and sending emails, anything.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Good evening.
You too, take care, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Bye.
Hey, Chris.
Alright, uh, so Penny and Lane Pub on Main Street, I did scour through a series of complaints.
I see them.
I did contact Alex Folk, who is no longer an owner of Penny Lane. The two new owners, um, I did, they sent an email, I guess they weren't aware. Of the issue with the music, they said it's going to impair their business if it's not amplified. I sent them some reasons as to why. They couldn't have the music, I haven't heard anything back, so we'll see what happens, so at least they're on notice that they can't have amplified music. That was earlier this week. Um.
Apparently Alex didn't tell them.
So. Other matters, uh, fine fiddle on Boston Post Road East, there were no complaints, everything went smooth as of September first. So just noting for the record that per your approval, all those conditions for operational uses have been lifted. Um, the only other thing that maybe that I have for you that may be of interest is the. Housing task force, which is partially comprised. Compiled of the planning commission members at their planning commission meetings, is gonna have some speakers that you might be interested in on housing. So I will just kind of reach out and um, well, they'll be open to all to listen to the speakers. Um, as the HTF is getting up to speed as a new task force, uh, but. Hope is coming to speak with them at their next meeting, um, Kerpa, Megan Juflis, who's our regional. Um, works for our regional planning agency, is also in the planning commission, she's gonna do a presentation on housing in the region, we're gonna talk a little bit too. I'll talk about our zoning regulations for housing. I have speakers coming from CHAFA. Youth and Family Services, so if you see something on one of your agendas that you find is interesting, please. Feel free to just come in and listen and sit in. Um, other than that, we're pugging along, we're busy. Not much else.
Anything from other commissioners? Um, I just, uh, one note, I did send out the confirmation that that all-day class. October nineteenth, uh, for those who already met your needs for training. You already met your needs for training, so you're fine.
Certainly.
Um, everybody else is registered, so I appreciate everybody uh doing that, and based on that. Attendance will meet the meet the requirements for, is it every two years?
It depends on when you're appointed your term, so you kinda have to, I think you just see for just to. Do it all every two years.
Every two years.
Have to.
But I just wanted to thank everybody for their responses.
And I think, uh, this safe street, or I keep saying safe streets, the traffic discussion tonight, that ended up being an hour, I think that would count as. And I'm like.
That was very important.
Yeah, it was, that was, that was very worthwhile, yeah.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Greg did a, I asked him to speak in the Connecticut Association of Zoning Officers. And I left, and it was a much longer presentation, and like then I'm like driving down the road, I'm like, wow. Now I know, you know what I mean, it's stuff like that, you just don't really think about it. Traffic, I guess, is a lot more fascinating than I thought, and maybe I'm just a geek.
Well, the way he presented it.
Yeah, very good presentation.
Yeah, to make it more efficient. Produces people road rage when they're, when they're upset and they're late.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Jerry Lewis, all in favor, signal by saying aye, aye, opposed, passes five zero zero. Thank you, everyone.